Okay, welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting, the special city council meeting for Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. All councilors and participants in this remote meeting are gathered via Zoom conference application. Remote public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. All right, I think we don't have any other announcements for now. Barbara, could I have the roll call, please?
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Gazinski.
He's coming in.
I just admitted him.
Okay, I'll come back to him. Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zaret.
Present.
JP Gazinski? He's there. I see him.
Okay.
Good enough.
All right, we're all here. Okay, so this is a special city council meeting, so the rules are a little different than the normal typical city council meeting. We are going to have public speak, but we're going to do it a little different. We will have a two-minute time limit for each individual. Also, I'm gonna alternate. So I'm gonna ask for folks who want to speak for a specific candidate so that we can get everybody in, in case there's more for one than the other. I want to make sure that someone gets to speak who is here for any of the candidates, and then we can wrap up with who's ever left. So I'll go down alphabetically by candidate and ask for public speak. Again, you'll have two minutes. If you would like to mute and unmute yourself, you can do that if you're on a phone by pressing star nine. Once I recognize you, then you can go ahead and speak. All right, I think we're all here. Let me get the list. Okay. So we will start with those who want to speak for Kay Collins. Go ahead and raise your hand. All right. Jason Montgomery, why don't you unmute yourself and go ahead and speak?
Good afternoon, this is Jason Montgomery. I am a East Hampton resident on Ferry Street. I am here to proudly, you know, voice my support for Kay Collins to accept the role of a city council person that has been vacated by Bill Lynch. I do not need to go down and probably speak to any city council person about Kay's qualifications because you have all worked with her in the past, either through the East Hampton Community Coalition, the Pride Group, or a variety of other initiatives that have come before the city council. I personally, as a member of the BIPOC community here in East Hampton, trust no ally above Kay Collins. I would not put my safety or the safety of my family in the hands of any other ally in our community, and I cannot tell you the importance of that statement, given our current climate. And, you know, I will try to keep this short and sweet so that people can speak, but the reality is that I don't believe there are many numerous qualified individuals who are trying to take this position, but no one more so than Kay and no one that, again, as a member of the BIPOC community in this town, I would want to see representing me, my safety and my interests more than Kay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, so I'm gonna have another person speak for Kay, and then we will move on to those who want to speak for some other folks first. Anyone else for Kay? Liz Perry.
Hello, I'm Liz Perry. I live in Ward Three. I am here to speak in favor of Kay Collins. I've had the pleasure of getting to know Kay since this past summer through working through the grassroots activist group AKind. When she told AKind that she was going to be nominated for city council, she shared with us her resume, which proved to me that she's undoubtedly qualified for this position. And I know that you have also seen her resume, so I won't go into detail about that, but I would like to highlight her commitment to the East Hampton community, which is impeccable, and her devotion to racial justice and general equality, which is a necessary quality for any political figure. What her resume might not show you is the hardworking woman Kay truly is. Kay often has a lot on her plate, but she adds more when asked. It's almost as if she has an insatiable hunger for undertaking tasks. She has not only never once floundered on her commitment to AKind, but she accomplishes everything that she sets out to do with a joyful attitude and a comforting presence. And to me, Kay Collins really is a woman who can do it all, and East Hampton would be very lucky to have her on the council.
Thank you, Liz. All right, anyone here to speak on behalf of Erica Flood? And anyone here to speak? We'll come back around. Anyone here to speak on behalf of Jared Hinkle? Okay. Gwen Morrissey. All right, Sarah?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Amaroso. I am a resident of East Hampton on Winter Street. First of all, I would like to preface my comments by saying that I'm so pleased to see three women who are extremely well-qualified, and I would be more than thrilled to have Kay, Erica, or Gwen appointed to this committee. I work with all of them. I am very pleased that you can vote using ranked choice voting as well, which will help lift up these three wonderful women candidates. In addition to that, I have worked very closely with Gwen on several efforts in our city, including working towards the new school vote, as well as working on several political campaigns in our city. And Gwen is a hard worker. She's enthusiastic. And her particular professional background really lends her a flexible ability to approach problems flexibly and to understand unique challenges. And, again, I really am so proud to see these three women candidates, and I thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thanks, Sarah. Anyone else for Gwen? Okay, Paul St. Pierre? Anyone in support of Paul? Joy, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here tonight to support the appointment of Paul St. Pierre to the vacant at-large seat. As a past city councilor, I know the dedication and the time it takes to be on the council, and I feel that Paul would be the perfect candidate. Instead of walking away from public service in 2017 when he lost the precinct seat to Omar, Paul threw himself into the city boards and committees. He's proven his dedication to the city by volunteering on numerous boards and committees. He served on the Park and Rec Board as the vice chair, Economic and Industrial Commission Telecom Committee, which was his original running point when he ran against Omar in 2017, and he serves on that committee as the chair. He participated in the Municipal Vulnerability and Preparedness MVP Study, introduced and proposed to save the Pepin School at the Public Workshop, and he brilliantly proposed the alternative funding for the water and sewer charges to the DPW, minimizing the cost increase impact to seniors in single-family homes. He has supplied free hand sanitizer to the council and aging for distribution when you couldn't get any in the stores. Paul would be a valuable asset to the council during these very trying times. He is a person who can bring all parties to the table and get things done. Sadly, I've heard that some were considering appointing a woman to the board because there weren't enough women represented on the board. As a woman, I took offense to that. I would hope that this would not be the case with all of you, especially in the gender-neutral society that we live in today. The council should be making the appointment to the most qualified candidate who brings the most to the table. The at-large appointment is critical for the council going forward with the financial decisions you will be making. Paul has a financial background to step up right into it without missing a beat. Please consider appointing Paul St. Pierre to the seat. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Joy. Okay, Jason, you've already had a chance to speak, so I'm gonna move on to some other folks first. Anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of any of the candidates? Pasqualina?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Pasqualina Azarello. I live in East Hampton in Precinct Five. I want to acknowledge how receptive city council has been to so many community members showing up in recent months. I was in touch with Peg recently to really acknowledge her leadership through being vulnerable, through bringing feeling into this space. There are a lot of changes taking place in East Hampton, a lot of voices of community members that are not yet being heard and uplifted in all of the ways that they can be, and that it's really important that they are. Whoever fills this seat, I feel very strongly that they must be someone who leads with empathy, who leads with vulnerability, who is a really keen and sensitive and receptive listener. This is a time to listen. And I have known Kay and I have worked with Kay very closely for the last four years. I'm the city arts coordinator, public servant here in East Hampton, and I'm also a very sensitive and receptive person. And I have seen Kay, time and time again, reach out, really be active, demonstrate her empathy, her consideration, her concern, always through action. There are Black residents in East Hampton. There are people of color. There are youth of color. There are trans youth. I work very closely with artists, our artist community and our small business community. They are always vulnerable, and they are very vulnerable right now, and they will be for the months and unfortunately, years to come as a result of the economic impacts of this pandemic. And I am here to really just speak so strongly for Kay Collins. She will create new channels and create points of access so that all of the voices in the city of East Hampton will be heard and will be present at meetings like this. We are in a culture change. We are in a culture shift. We're seeing it, and I applaud it because I feel the movement here in our city government, and I feel it most honestly in the city council. And I feel like this is a moment to move with that, to be with that, and I feel like Kay will do a phenomenal job.
Thank you, Pasqualina. Jackie Brusso Pereira.
Hi, thanks. I'm Jackie Brusso Pereira, 39, Garfield Ave, Precinct Four, and I would like to speak on behalf of Gwen Morrissey, who's someone that I know and have worked with on a bunch of different community projects for a few years now. Gwen and I first got to know each other when we were working on the school vote, and I gotta tell you, I've never seen anyone go out and knock doors like Gwen Morrissey. She's pretty amazing. So from that, I want to say that Gwen is really passionate. She really cares about East Hampton as a community. She works in the field of education, and in her job, she does a lot of research and analysis, and I think that's something that we can really benefit from on city council. I know that if Gwen were to get the seat, one of the things she would for sure do, in addition to listening, Pasqualina, I liked that point that you made. I think it's true. We want someone who's gonna listen. So I know Gwen is someone who will listen to what is being said from all around the city, and then she would use her intelligence and her own research abilities to really dig in and find out what's going on and make decisions that would benefit the entire city of East Hampton. I wrote a lot more in my letter, but I just wanted to make sure that I got a chance to say how fabulous Gwen is and how much I really respect her and have gotten to know what a really amazing human. She is super smart, full of passion, full of energy, and just someone that really would be fantastic on city council. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Jackie. Carolyn Cushing.
Hello, Carolyn Cushing, Main Street, Ward Four, and I am here talking on behalf of Kay Collins because she is the candidate I know best. I think I've spent the majority of my Sunday afternoons over the past four years with her in groups, just pick up a little thread that Pasqualina laid, in groups, civic engagement groups that have, I think, resulted in this more public participation in city council and city committees. And that's due, you know, Kay has been a mover, a catalyst in these groups, and also, like, she is someone who wants to listen, wants to hear from people, has her own opinions, of course, and she'll state those, but she's always listening. And I think Kay Collins is probably already in a lot of people's cell phones. They can call her up. A lot of people call her up and can talk to Kay, which I do think is important in this time. And she's, and from different communities, different communities of people, you know, this kind of activist community, the arts community, LBDQ community. And I think she's also, we do, we have great choices. She's particularly good for this moment, for this special seat because she has been coming to city council meetings recently, over the past few months, in depth, over the past few years. So she's kind of plugged into what's happening. And I wrote more in my letter, but just briefly to say that to the group. And thank you. Thank you for public speak and all you're doing at city council, and good luck with our ranches voting.
Great. Thanks, Carolyn. Jen Markey. We can't hear you, Jen.
No. Muted, unmuted.
There you go.
Oh, okay, great. Hi, my name is Jennifer Markey. I live on Ridgewood Terrace in JP's district. I don't have a big, long thing tonight, but I did want to make sure that I spoke up and kind of echoed some of the points that have been made about Kay as a, Kay Collins as a nominee, and also kind of bring the perspective of someone. So I'm not someone who has historically been super involved in local politics. It was something that I kind of assumed was just happening around me, and that, you know, if I had much input, I wouldn't really be able to kind of make a difference. And Kay was one of many people, but was a particularly strong influence in my own coming to understand the importance of local politics, how to get involved, you know, when silly questions about like, okay, so like, signing up to be on a committee, what is that like? What do I do? You know, is speaking at city council or writing a letter or making a call, is that gonna impact things? Kay has been such a calm, confident, and empathetic leader and a real kind of role model of how positive it can be to get involved in the community, to, you know, start Pride in East Hampton, to be involved in the ECC or in AKind. I just, I wanted to speak to the fact that I think that Kay in particular has a quality about her that does welcome and invite people who maybe haven't been part of the conversation. I know that as a renter in East Hampton, I also felt like I couldn't really get involved in local politics, but I wanted to make sure. Yeah, I'll wrap up. Sorry. But I really have appreciated that welcoming tone, and I thank you all for listening.
Thanks, Jen. Tristan Chambers. You can unmute yourself, Tristan.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, city council, for listening to all of us tonight. I too am here to speak about Kay. Sorry. I haven't met all of the wonderful candidates that we're talking about tonight, but I can tell you a little bit about my own personal experience working with Kay on, you know, local issues here in East Hampton. And I can tell you that she has an amazing ability to evolve dialogue and develop consensus around difficult issues. And I appreciate that other people have been mentioning her ability to listen, and I think that that's really true, and that may be part of it. And I'd like to point out that East Hampton, like a lot of towns around our country, are facing difficult issues that require that kind of dialogue and consensus around tough, you know, tough problems. And East Hampton is growing and changing culturally, and I think that Kay is the kind of person who can help East Hampton do that. Moreover, I just want to say that I can tell you also, from my experience working with her on community issues, that she is clear-headed and also educated about the ways that city government works because of her experience working on issues in East Hampton. So I think that she would be a valuable addition to city council in many more practical ways as well, and could really hit the ground running to fill an open seat. So I think those are all advantages. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tristan.
I live on Clark Street. Tristan Chambers, for the record.
Thank you. All right. Laura's iPad. Can't wait to hear from Laura's iPad.
I don't. Hey, I don't know why this isn't. Oh, there we go. Hi. Thanks for the opportunity. I wanted to take a minute to say what a beautiful issue we have with five great candidates. We're encouraged by increased participation, and we're excited for this first trial run of RCB. And I want to say a few words about Erica Flood, whom I've known for 15 years, first as a neighbor and a co-mom when we lived next door to each other in Precinct Two, and a real champion for her working-class neighborhood, champion for folks dealing with opioid and substance abuse issues, which I know she holds close to her heart. For single working moms, I feel for her deeply, and I think, you know, she brings a nice breadth of experience. A lot of things rolled into one candidate, and we see a lot of these features in a lot of the people before us tonight, but project management skills, entrepreneurial skills, and just a really dynamic collaborative personality. I don't envy your choice tonight, but I appreciate this wide breadth of participation. Good luck to you guys.
Thanks, Laura's iPad.
Thank you.
Molly Thomas.
Hi there. This is my first time participating in anything like this, and really, I am here to speak out also in support of Kay, who I've known for several years now as a neighbor and a community member. And just much of like what others have shared, I feel really strongly about Kay's ability to be a member of this, of the town council. She's passionate, really enthusiastic. She's, as Jen shared, you know, she's also kind of encouraged me to become more interested and present in my own community on a more active level and learning about town politics and things that can seem rather daunting if you've not been involved in that. And she has a really nice way of making that information accessible to others. And I'm always impressed by how much of her own time she's spent volunteering and providing advocacy and activism to others in the community and on behalf of a real diverse group of community members. I think she would be a wonderful addition. So thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Myra Oyedemi.
Myra. Oh.
There you are.
So, hi. I'm joining you from my son's room. I'm speaking out on behalf of Kay despite there being a student meeting night in this school because hopefully Kay has me multitasking, and I'm here because I'm very passionate to speak about her and her candidacy. From, if you know that I'm a newer resident to this town, but Kay has had the amazing ability to be able to call people in while to city governance, to processes, to wanting to participate, to spend basically spending six hours with me at your meeting. So she's really led the charge for people to be involved and knowing that being part of city governance and part of speaking out and having a voice is critical to the growing of East Hampton, to the growing representation that's being brought and the ideas that are being brought to you. And I think as a direct result of her actions in this city, many people are engaged, many people are part of positive conversations. And I do hope you had a chance to read my letter because I did have a chance to write one to you. I just wanted to say, without Kay's voice and encouragement, and probably there would be one less voice from Precinct One that you'd be hearing. And Kay didn't need a position to be able to share her knowledge about open meeting rules. She didn't need a position, but she should get one. Sorry, this is what happens in multitasking. She willingly and generously shares her time making this community better. And I stress the word unity when I say community. She brings people in together.
Can you wrap up, please? Thank you.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yes. So I'm all for Kay. I do hope that you put her number one in your ranked choice valid. And because of her, I also know a lot about ranked voting. I hope that makes something happy. Do vote for her.
Thank you, Myra. Cassie Ekoff.
That's it, indeed. Oh, I apologize for my background. I am, in fact, not in Joe Biden's basement. I never understood the importance of ranked voting before. I really have struggled with this. And I wanted to say that I wanted to speak out for both Gwen and Paul St. Pierre. In the spirit of ranked voting, how would you be able to turn down Gwen, who brings program evaluation experience in an incredibly complex skill and who can run a meeting like no one I have ever known? She's probably half my age, but totally my role model. Paul St. Pierre came to Edict with fully developed plans for business development during the pandemic. He had already done all the pre-work. He was amazing. He had a work plan. How do you turn down somebody with that kind of initiative and that kind of forethought? I don't know. I guess it's ranked voting, but I just wanted to make sure that people heard about these two individual skills. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Cassie. Anyone else for public speak? Oh, Natalie, I can see you there. Go ahead.
Hi, guys. So I also want to say that I am so excited to see all of this activity on city council. I am very excited to see Kay Collins running. I'm gonna be honest, I'm not excited for some of the other candidates. Paul looks like he has a, I'm interested to hear what he says today, but a lot of racists in our town really like him. Kind of weird. Also, as far as I'm concerned, Erica Flood said something along the lines, I don't know exactly how long ago, regarding Person's Village, this is a low-income community, and how she just didn't really like the riff.
Point of order, Madam President.
Yep. So Natalie, we're preferring to hear only from what you are interested in on each candidate. It won't be helpful to us to go down a negative path, unfortunately.
Fair enough. Just keep that in mind. And go Kay.
Thank you.
Night guys.
Okay, anyone else? I don't see anyone. These hands are up. Okay, then we will close out public speak. So thank you everyone. That was, that was great. So now we have to conduct a little business. We are going to. Review one of our city council rules to make sure that the the vote tonight is completely. Accurate and fair. So I will turn it over to Tom Peak, Counselor Peak, to talk about. Changes we may or may not make to City Council Rule 8B.
Thank you, Madam President. So the Rules Committee met on Monday to discuss this. We looked at a whole bunch of different options. For how to make sure that there is a fair outcome in the event of a tie. We brought in Dan Gilbert, who's on this call as well. Because he's the Chair of our Rank Choice Voting Ad Hoc Committee, which just for context in the public. Is working to develop the actual ordinance to govern ranked choice voting in the city as a result of our last ballot campaign. And so we wanted to bring him on as a subject matter expert. The real issue at hand here, as I think most of you are aware, is that when only eight people are running, the event of a tie at some point is relatively likely. And we wanted to make sure that there are very clear and well-defined rules on how a tie should proceed. I sent you all an email. With some language. I can also share this if the President thinks that that would be appropriate.
Yep, let me make you a co-host Tom. Go ahead.
Can everyone see that?
Not yet. It's coming. There we go.
Great. So the basic way, the the basic thing that we decided on was actually a suggestion from Counselor Coniff that everyone kind of liked. And the basic idea is that if there's a tie, we look, you know, so basically what, just to back up for a second, I'm trying to not get ahead of myself here. If we. Like everyone's going to rank the candidates in their order of preference from their favorite to their least favorite. From there, they are, we are going to vote. If there is at any point a tie in the standard ranked choice voting process. Then what's going to happen is we're going to look at the ranks that each of the candidates got and average them. The candidate with the lowest average. Will be the one that advances the candidate with the highest average will be the one that is eliminated. So just to give you an example. If there's two candidates that each just get one vote, right? And they're tied. If one of those people was a lot of people's last choices and the other one was most people's like second or third choice, then that. The person who was a lot of people's last choices is going to be the one that gets eliminated on the grounds that. You know, the other one is a little bit less polarizing for the membership of the council. That makes sense so far?
Yep.
Okay, in the case that they're tied there, then we're, there's just not much we can do. At that point, the council is going to have to make a decision. To take a vote on how to. Like to eliminate one of those people and continue. So that is going to be the how we handle that if 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 we basically, if it's a dead heat even at that point. We're just going to have to make a choice as a body and hope that that isn't tied. And if it is tied, we're just going to have to deliberate until we aren't. Which by the way, is how this sort of thing would go down in the same process if we weren't using a ranked ballot. If we reached a tie, we would just. Argue until somebody gave up. That's how most bodies deal with this. So this hopefully will. Streamline things a little bit, but if it comes to that, then it comes to that. Any questions so far? I see Counselor.
Counselor Rist.
I just want to speak in favor of it. I was a little concerned. At first, good arguments were made for a deliberative repeated ballot at the end of our ranked choice voting and if we had a tie. But then I realized that averaging people out at the end is consistent with ranked choice voting. Because we're really talking about mathematics and analytics here. If you average them out and there was an example made where one person was 1.5 and another person was 2.1. The 1.5 wins and someone would say, no, that's not fair. That's not that large of a mandate. Well, I want to point out that in a recent election in North Hampton. A major issue out of like 6,000 voters was passed with two votes. And that's a very small percentage. And when we have athletic events, people win those events with very small seconds or points. This is how we've chosen to do this. Rank choice voting. Is what we've chosen. So if we end up with an average, I think that Counselor Coniff has come up with a great way. To break a tie in the unlikely case we have a tie. Because it does come down in many cases to one vote or feet and inches and this, in this case, small numbers. But there's only eight of us, so that's the way it goes. Let's hope there's not a tie, but if there is, I think this is fair. And I wanted to compliment Counselors Peak and Coniff for coming up with this. I was a little hesitant at first. There was great arguments for deliberative voting, but I'm sorry, I think this is consistent with ranked choice voting and it is fair. If we're going to use ranked choice voting, we might as well do this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peak, I also want to, I don't, it would now be a time to. Speak to a potential amendment. Don't, don't yell at me, but.
Don't yell, I promise.
I just want to, all other things would remain the same. So I'm not suggesting we change any, change anything, but. In the unlikely event that when we do the averaging. Let's say the two least likely. In your scenario, it's pretty clear. The average would be very. Easy to discern which one was the least preferred. But there is a statistical probability that both of the lower preferred people would in fact. Potentially end up with an equal average.
Right.
So in that scenario. I did some research today and there is a rule in Robert's Rules under preferred voting. That says if at any point, two or more candidates are tied for the least popular position. The ballots are redistributed in a single step, all of the tied names being treated as eliminated. So if we got to two that we, that were absolutely identical, they would both get eliminated.
Okay, well, I think that that is probably fine in most cases. Because I think in most cases, I think the only case, again, we're, and I I hate to do this to everyone watching, but I really do think it's important. That we have these rules clearly established before this. Because I don't want a situation where we're coming up with things on the fly and anybody could feel like they were treated unfairly. Especially when we have so many great candidates who have really, you know, put their best foot forward and I, I want to honor that. I think that in most cases, if, yeah, if you're talking about like a tie where each person gets one vote, the only time that it would actually matter in any way is if. Like. If one of those candidates were eliminated, that person's second choice was the other candidate up for elimination because otherwise. There's like, it just wouldn't matter. You could eliminate them both at the same time or sequentially and it wouldn't change the outcome. So I think that it would be fine to say that multiple last place candidates can be simultaneously eliminated, provided. That the order does not. That the order would not change the ultimate outcome of the race, but I do think that just procedurally, should we make this motion and then deliberate on a motion to amend?
Yep, I'll make a motion to, well, it'll be my motion. Well, Tom, could you make, well, I'll make it. I'd like to make a motion to amend that in the event of two least popular positions.
Point of order, we have to put the first, we have to.
All right.
Rule and then amend it.
Okay, all right.
So Tom, make a motion to for the rule as you amended it.
I I would like to make a motion to adopt Rule 8B as amended.
Motion and a second. Any further conversation? That would be me. I'd like to make an amendment. If it, can I go ahead and just make it?
Sure, yeah, of course.
In the third paragraph, last sentence, add, if at any point two or more candidates are tied for the least popular position, the ballots are redistributed in a single step. All of the tied names being treated as eliminated.
I'll second that amendment motion.
Well, okay, and now that we've got the motion second, I just, the language there, I just want to make sure that we're kind of precise about this. Can I just suggest a slight? So if we said. To tie our tide for the last place position.
Least popular position.
Okay. Is that like Robert's Rules?
Yep.
Okay. Can I, I just make a, make a, take a stab at this? Multiple candidates. A B simultaneously eliminated, provided that the order. Elimination would not affect, oops, affect the result of the election. Because I think if it is going to result, affect the result of the election, then we probably should deliberate on it.
How will we know?
Well, if, say that you have two people who are tied for, they each have one vote and each, and neither of those people's second choice vote is the other person with one vote. Then the order which you do, it doesn't matter, right? Like neither person, neither way would end up with one of those people having two votes.
Yeah, okay.
But if one, if it could, and that would make that person tied with somebody else. Well, I guess even in that case, it's not a big deal. So maybe this, maybe this last sentence is. I just. I just, yeah, the only thing, I just want to make sure that this all is consistent and not contradictory. Do you know? How does this look to you right now in terms of being consistent and not contradictory? I worry that it is a little contradictory with the sentence right before it. I'm, I'm fine with what you're suggesting. I'm just trying to be, you know. A little bit careful here.
Okay, Counselor Rist.
It's confusing and I would like to suggest that we don't add more to this. I think the averaging is already complicated. And at the point where we reach that situation. We can make a motion to suspend the rules and go to deliberative voting or some other way. I just don't know how. We should do this tonight when we're voting. This needs some time to be discussed, in my view. It's confusing to me. I. Maybe it's because I'm. Not a math accountant like Peg and Tom, but I I just feel like we could, if we get to a tie vote and the averaging doesn't work somehow. Then we can deliberate on what to do. I just don't see how we solve this tonight. I mean, I don't know. I'm just very, I'm just, I'm very unsure of this.
What, do any of the other counselors have any comments or thoughts? Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. I second what Counselor Rist said. I think we should keep it the way that we're going to amend. Vote tonight with the recommendation of the rules. And if something like this happened, I think we should suspend the, the rule and go the other way.
Okay, Counselor Zerit, I saw your hand earlier.
Well, I was going to say, first of all, thank you for the 11th hour amendment, generally for the Rules Committee. I agree with. What Counselor Rist said, that there's a very elegant solution and using the, the methodology of ranked choice voting to kind of solve itself. I actually really appreciate what you did, President Coniff, here. Kind of combining the, the framework in place with ranked choice voting. The solution that the group came up, the committee came up with as well as employing a pre-existing methodology through Robert's Rules. I like this idea. I do agree that with the other counselors, however, that I just want to know what the potential pitfalls could be and I don't know if. Tonight would be the night to codify this amendment. But I'd be very interested in continuing to discuss it and then put it in place. I just, I want to use our ranked choice voting mavens. Like Tom Peak and Dan Gilbert to kind of run through if there's any weird possibilities that we might actually be eliminating viable votes by doing this. That's, that's all. But I really think this is a brilliant solution. I just want to be able to have the time to really examine it.
Yeah, I have no problem. You know, I, I was, I was trying to think of other scenarios that could come up within a tie. And how they would be handled, but I have no problem if, if we want to suspend it, like go with what we have. Vote down the amendment and then suspend rules if we get to that eventuality and then maybe relook at this closer after we have some data from tonight.
Madam President.
Counselor JP, Counselor JP Kuzinski.
Thank you. I'd like to. Offer to suspend the rules if we still have such a rule that will allow Dan Gilbert. Our ranked choice voting expert to comment. I've seen his hand and I know he was quite helpful. On Monday night at the Rules Committee, so that would be my request.
I'm, yeah, I'm fine with, if we're all in agreement, I'm fine with letting Dan speak now, if, unless anyone has an objection. Okay, Dan, sorry, I couldn't see you. I'm not all, I can't see all the people. Go ahead, Dan.
Hi, and you know, thank you for involving me in this process. This amendment would not affect the results of the election whatsoever. And it's, it's being brought up slightly because of a, of a not entirely impossible situation that could arise where the City Council would. Have to go into a vote to break a tie unnecessarily. That said, you know, I, I don't think it's absolutely necessary to add this amendment. I think the City Council has the tools. Needed to deal with this situation. I'm certainly aware of the situations that comes up and I can advise if it, if it does happen as to how the council can conceptualize it and go about making that decision. So, you know, I, I tend to side with the people who don't like an 11th hour rule change. I don't think this, the sentence is critical to having a fair vote. I think it's already there in Robert's Rules. I think. In addition, having read Robert's Rules on, on preferential voting. There is a serious problem with some of the things in Robert's Rules and this, this is one of them because there are many cases where. Where you do not want to eliminate tied candidates at the same time because one of them really could win. And, and you know, Robert's Rules has had preferential voting in it for a very, very long time and it hasn't necessarily evolved with. The adoption of, of ranked choice voting in the rest of the country and the world. So, you know, like I said, the sentence does not have a, have a bearing on the results at all. So. That's kind of a weight off for everyone making this decision. And I'd be inclined to agree with the people who say, let's, let's, um, let's not amend it. And we can deal with the situation. If it comes up, we have the tools to do so.
Okay, thanks Dan.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from anyone? Counselor Rist.
I was just going to ask Counselor Coniff, if you're in agreement, just withdraw the amendment just so we can move on.
Yep, I, I was just wanting to see if anyone else had any other comments, but and I can't see everyone, so.
Tom has his hand up.
Yeah, just one thing, Madam President. You can do that, but I did realize that when we wrote this amendment yesterday, I should have taken out the words beyond the first choice of voting. From the first sentence of the third paragraph, so I will have to make that amendment.
Okay, I will then go ahead and withdraw my motion to amend.
Withdraw the second.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend, to strike the words. Beyond the first round of voting from the first sentence of the third paragraph of the.
Point of order, could we remove what was, has been removed before we go on to another change, please?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, that makes total, yeah. Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, that makes total, yeah.
Thank you, JP.
Because what we were initially talking about at the start of the night was a, two different solutions, one for the first round and one for subsequent rounds. Your suggested solution was a little bit more elegant and can be employed at any round, and so that was the source of the, um, I, I should have taken that out, and I didn't. I just don't want to confuse it.
You want the word point to be in, don't you?
Oh, yeah, 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 just beyond the first round of voting.
Just A beyond.
Is that a motion, Tom? I'll second that.
Yes, I'll make, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second the amendment.
Any further conversation? I will say that I think you need to also delete the word A.
Oh. Yes.
You have A later.
All right, yeah.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? Barbara, if you're still with us, could we have a roll call vote on, do we, now, I'm sorry, is this?
Amendment?
Yeah, is this just for the amendment, Tom? The, this, removing this sentence?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, Barb, just for the amendment.
Yep. Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Wrist?
F.
Lindsay, did you say pass?
He said yes.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zerit?
Yes.
Okay, amendment, um, the amendment to the main motion passes. Any further conversation on the main motion, which is to amend to the wording that we see on the screen? See all your hands. Uh, Counselor Kuzinski?
Yeah, I would like some clarification, uh, for everyone as we read the, the third paragraph. If at any point a tie among candidates with the least votes shall impede this process, the candidate with the highest average of all rankings be eliminated. I, I'm not sure how we're doing our count, highest average. Are we counting one to five, five to one? Uh, and if somebody can just make sure everyone understands that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, um, so if there's one candidate that has three ones, or say four ones and four fives, and you have another candidate that has four ones and four twos, the candidate with the four ones and the four fives would have the higher average ranking, because their, their average would be three versus 1.5. Does that make sense?
Is there a way to characterize this in terms of the lowest ranking and therefore the greatest number of, the greatest amount of support?
What if I put the highest numerical average, to make it clear that we're talking about the number rankings? Does that make it clearer?
How about you also put highest numerical average parentheses lowest preference?
Strongest preference, greatest preference?
Well, it would be lowest.
Lowest preference. Okay, lowest, thank you.
Least preference, yep.
How about lowest overall preference? Does that, does that clarify it for you, JP?
I think that makes it, uh, a, a bit clearer how we're characterizing this. Thank you.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion, JP? Because we already have a motion for the other.
I move that we, uh, strike the language that had been on the screen and insert after the comma, the candidate with the highest numerical average parentheses lowest overall preference.
Second.
Motion second of the amendment. Any conversation, discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Wrist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerit?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
All right, we are back to the main motion with the amendment. Any further conversation?
I have one more. I have just one more question. Uh, and it has to do with that third paragraph again, seems to be a tough one. If a tie still remains, the council shall deliberate and take a vote to eliminate a single candidate. So let's say there are, there's a vote and it's four, two, two, four, two, two. That would break the guy. What if it's four, one, one, one?
Right, we would, sorry.
If they break a single candidate, or to eliminate a single candidate, I suppose that would stand, because then we would be selecting one of three candidates, three candidates to remain. Is that correct? Sorry, there are just so many permutations here.
I know, I know.
It's much simpler to just do a deliberative process vote, rather than kind of figure out all the combinations. But we're, we're, we're working through it, and hopefully we'll have it very clear before we vote.
Any other discussion? And I can't see all of you, so if you want to manually.
I do ask that Dan Gilbert be recognized.
Okay, Dan, go ahead.
There we go. Um, so I just wanted to clarify, because in some of the materials that I sent out to, um, the city council president prior to the vote, I, uh, referenced a tie-breaking process in ranked choice voting that's called previous round elimination, where you look at the totals in previous rounds, um, before resulting to, to this averaging that we were talking about. Um, as this rule is currently written, uh, we would not be using that as a tiebreaker. We would only be using the, um, uh, these tie-breaking scores as a, as a tiebreaker. I just wanted to confirm that, um, only because I had, uh, sent that out, um, perhaps erroneously in, in the emails that, you know, previously this week. So, um, Tom is, is nodding his head, and, and that's my understanding based on this rule too, that we would not be using any previous round elimination, um, you know, with, with the rules as written.
I, I have no comment on it.
I think we have to use what's written.
Yeah.
I, I, just to be clear, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to confirm that, because it had been in some of the materials I sent out earlier. Um, but I don't have a problem with this way at all. It's, it's, it's a sound, fair, and slightly simpler way.
All right, any further discussion before we take a vote on the main motion? All right. Barbara?
Okay, just, just one thing before we begin. Um, Tom, I, I need you to email me what you emailed to everybody today that I didn't get, and I also need to have this email, because I, I don't have the earlier version, and I just want to make sure that I have it correct.
As soon as I stop sharing, I will save this as version three and send both of those to you right away.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Wrist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerit?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Right, motion passes as amended. Rule 8B. Okay. All right, now, before we move into, um, hearing from each candidate, I just want to make the point. I know we've, we've seen, uh, Dan Gilbert a couple of times jump in here. Um, there is, um, a process within voting that is delineated again with Roberts rules, and because we are not all in the same room, and, um, running these, these kinds of, uh, elections are a little bit different. I have the discretion to bring in someone who is unaffiliated with, the results of this have no, uh, have no skin in the game, and, uh, they call them, uh, vote tellers, and essentially they manage the ballots, and then they report the vote. So Dan Gilbert, I have asked to do that function in this meeting, and that is why he's here. He will be the official person that receives the ballots, and then he will, uh, let us very transparently see how things have been voted. He will be sharing his screen, uh, later on. So just for anyone who is, uh, wondering why he is here. Um, okay, that resolves that issue. Now we will move into, um, hearing from each candidate. So the process now will be, we're gonna ask each candidate to give us five minutes of, uh, a speech on why they want to be on the city council, what they bring to the city council. We're going to go in alphabetical order of the, uh, nominees, and, uh, at the conclusion of all five, we will then turn it over to city counselors who can ask, uh, one question each of the candidates, and we will again start with, uh, alphabetically. We will get all the questions out for one person before we move on to the next. Does that make sense? For the five folks that are gonna now be speaking. Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I, we haven't done this before. It's a little exciting. Uh, so bear with us as we, you know, it's not as slick and clean as we would love it to be, but I appreciate that you're all here, and I appreciate that you're working through this with us, and we are, we are working mightily to make this transparent and fair. So, um, all right. I will now turn the microphone over to Kay Collins. Kay, if you'd like to give us five minutes of why you want to be on the city council. There you go.
Thank you so much, Peg. Um, so hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Kay Collins. I'm a proud resident of East Hampton. I live on Carol Ave with my wife and two adorable rescues, a dog and a cat. Many of you know me through my work with East Hampton Community Coalition, East Hampton Pride, and most recently A Kind, oh, one, two, oh, two, seven, and he is not enough. But I would like to share a few things with you that you might not know. I didn't grow up in East Hampton, but I did grow up not terribly far away in Worcester. When I was a child, my dad worked at a linen company based in nearby Springfield, so my first experience with Western Mass was visiting him at work and going to the Biggie. Much like East Hampton, Worcester is a former mill city with a vibrant arts community, so moving to East Hampton about a decade ago, I found myself instantly at home. Actually, at that time, East Hampton was way ahead of the game, being much more successful than Worcester, at repurposing the mill buildings, so I was, I was very impressed. I lived in various Boston towns in the early 90s, and for nine years I lived in Michigan, mainly on the outskirts of Detroit, something that I have a, a connection with Counselor Rothschild about. Prior to my last seven or so years in the financial industry, I spent about 25 years as a floral designer, helping to run the shops that I worked for much of that time. This gives me a deep understanding of the challenges of running a small business, and a deep desire to see how I can support our beloved local businesses in this incredibly challenging time. Western Mass businesses have begun closing their doors because of COVID, and I don't want to see that happen in East Hampton, where our restaurants, bookstores, and other businesses add so much to the richness of our community and give back so much to us all. My current job requires me to be agile and adapting to changing legislations and economic factors. It requires active listening and the ability to present complex information to people who may have no experience with a given topic. I support a team of nearly 40 people with a great diversity of age, education, and background, and it's my job to train and mentor them and help them to function as a team. As a member of our company's Pride Leadership Group, I have the privilege of working to find ways for business to support the LGBTQI plus community goes in and out of the workplace. As a community member, as the council knows, I have extensive experience with the city's ordinance process, navigating city council public speak time, and can handily explain the difference between an ordinance, a ballot measure, and an amoral executive order. So while I expect a steep learning curve is inevitable should I join you, I am not starting that curve from the floor. I would of course be disingenuous to tell you that I come to the city council with no opinions of my own. As a queer woman, my civil rights and bodily autonomy are debated on a regular basis. They are not, though they should be, guaranteed. Even as I have fear for the future, I sit in my privilege and I want to use it to fight for lasting change. You all have experience with my passion about social justice and my desire to make East Hampton truly a model, small city of the 21st century that is sustainable, inclusive, balanced, and a great place to live. Truth in advertising. In my most recent work with A Kind, sorry about the talk, in my most recent work with A Kind, it was really crucial to me to work with direct stakeholders, in this case, BIPOC community members, Black Indigenous residents and people of color in the community, on shedding light on systemic racism, both inside and outside of our community, to hear their stories and elevate their voices. I want all community members to have a sense of agency, like I did when I brought Counselors Peek and Zaret the idea of a resolution supporting a yes-on-three vote to a ballot question of holding public protections for transgender people in Massachusetts, and a resolution was very quickly passed. I want people to understand that they can participate in the process of making change in our city. I want to be very clear about the fact that I am absolutely willing to speak to any resident, not just residents that I agree with. This vote is a unique opportunity for me to be allowed to roll up my sleeves and jump right in to do the hard work that it takes to run the city. The stories that I have heard from community members throughout the years that I have worked with them have both inspired and humbled me. To the residents of East Hampton, I want to hear your stories. I want to hear what you're passionate about, and I always want to know what I can do to make this community and the world a better place. To the city council, I know how hard I'll be work to make East Hampton thrive, and I would be honored to work alongside you. And I just want to say, I am so impressed with the city that we have fielded five people to step up for this position, and all of them we would be lucky to have. Thank you.
Must have practiced your timing, Kay. It was right up to the five-minute mark. Good job. Uh, next up, we have Erica Flood. Erica?
Thank you. I did not practice my timing, but I'm putting a timer on, going now. Uh, just as I shut my video off, my sister brought me this. I just want to show this. My sister is my hero. She's about to reach 10 months clean from heroin this month. I'm gonna be real. That's all I know how to be. I want to address what Natalie was about to say, and I want to debunk all of the rumors that are out there about me. When we were talking about Parsons Village seven years ago, the point that I was making got misconstrued. I grew up with a single mother in the 80s. We were evicted eight times before I reached fourth grade. I've lived in several neighborhoods in East Hampton, and I've lived in Southampton, because that's where the other half of my family lived. When I was talking about Parsons Village, my main concern was about affordability and a path to homeownership. I am dedicated to a path to homeownership. Low-income families in struggling and vulnerable communities need help, and they've needed help for a long time. And I know that there's this idea out there about me that is wrong, and if you haven't had the chance to sit down with me and talk, I invite you to send me a text message or send me an email, and I will sit down with you, and I will tell you my story. I lost my mother to AIDS when I was 11. I grew up with my grandparents. I grew up with the help of my family. I put myself through college, and I came back to East Hampton. When I left, tube products, tubed products closed, Kella brush closed, Stanley home products closed. Everything was closed. When I came back, the arts were revitalizing our community, and I had gone to school to be an artist, and I was excited that somehow what I pursued found its way to my hometown. So I just want to say, I'm here tonight because I ran last fall, hoping I would have a seat on this council, and this feels like a second chance. And if anybody has any doubt as to why I'm here tonight, I want you to know that I'm here to speak for everyone. In the last year, I've tried to dive in as deep as I could. Omar and I have forged a really wonderful relationship. We've worked on a lot of, uh, um, projects that I mentioned during my campaign. We've come to a really great place. We've gotten initiatives going. Uh, green spaces, public safety. Um, in addition to that, I want, I had so much fun, and this is gonna sound nerdy, but I had so much fun knocking doors during the campaign that I applied for the census, and I worked for the census this year, and I've knocked on more doors in East Hampton than probably most people. And that gave me such an amazing opportunity to get to know my neighbors, and I feel like I really, truly understand a wide range of issues. And I feel like I really truly understand a wide range of issues, and I want to represent them. So if you're wondering why I'm here, it's because I care. I'm not going anywhere. I'm in East Hampton not only because upward mobility is not necessarily the easiest thing for my family, but it's also because I love this community. It's who I am. It's where I came from. And I'm always going to be here. And I will always be open to dialogue with anyone, even the people who don't understand me. So I want to throw that invitation out there. I want to thank you for your time. I am truly honored to be among this list of people tonight. I think everybody here has something to offer to our city, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Alright. Jared Hinkle. Who's Jared? There he is.
Hello. Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jared Hinkle. I live on Muntzka Drive here in East Hampton. My wife and my family have lived here for eleven years. When we decided to, it was time to purchase a house, we looked at many surrounding communities, and we found everything we wanted here in East Hampton. I have four wonderful children. Two of them are still attending East Hampton public schools to have graduated. So, you know, it's just a commitment that I want to continue with living here and raising my family here. Through that time of living here, I've been a baseball coach, a soccer coach, a scout leader, which I still am, because I believe that helping the youth will form a better future for our residents and our community. I'm also a veteran of the United States Army, which I have served in Operation Iraqi Freedom, where I was awarded the Purple Heart for injuries in combat. And that's another organization, another group that I am barely, very deeply passionate about. I belong to a, to organization of veterans that our motto is vets helping vets. And that's one thing I want to bring to East Hampton is East Hampton helping East Hampton. We all live here. It's, it's a great community. There's a diverse amount of people here, and it's just a multi, uh, melting pot. I won't get into my resume that much because everybody's seen it. It's online. So I've had many different jobs currently right now. I am a shift supervisor with Ryder Transportation in the Field Maintenance Service Department. Basically, what I do is I manage the technicians that are working on the vehicles to ensure that they are up to state and federal safety regulations. So when they are rolling down the road, they are safe to be around. As y'all know, I ran in two thousand seventeen for the city council at large, which I was not elected to, but I've continued on. I've continued serving my community in the background, helping the youth and helping our veterans. So thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Great. Gwen Morrisey.
Hi, everyone. I'm Gwen Morrisey. I live on Mayor Street over in Precinct Three. And councillor Derby is responsible for inviting me into this campaign just about two and a half weeks ago, and that is on a speedier timeline than I might have considered myself, but I have realized that I could be really great in this role, and I would love to tell you why. A couple of my core beliefs include that you are responsible for co-creating the world you want to live in and that you get as good as you give. These beliefs guide my choices of paid and volunteer work and are the reason I persistently donate my time and my talent to the city and our region. My graduate education in Michigan was focused on how young people learn about democracy and civic engagement, because that stuff is where my heart is. And it's easy to remain excited about it for three years of dissertation writing. Civic engagement is what my family does, and it's the best way I know to demonstrate devotion to my community. So I've invested my writing and research and data analysis and facilitative skills in organizations and projects of all kinds, because a community with a strong volunteer backbone knows itself and can advocate for itself better. When you love the place you live, that's what you want. When I worked with Peg on her campaign last year, we coordinated with Lindsay's campaign to hold an event called Women for Women that served two purposes. One, get excited about women candidates for council. Two, come away with information and motivation to be more involved in our fair city beyond voting. We wanted to encourage our women friends and neighbors to think of local government and politics as worthy of their time, meaningful to their everyday lives, and frankly, to build up a deeper bench of women committed to participating in the policymaking process, so we wouldn't find ourselves so underrepresented on city council or other boards too much longer. I am overjoyed that there are three women up for consideration tonight. That is a win in itself. Representation really matters, and to include more women is one step in the progress our cities' boards and committees need to make, along with greater inclusion of non-white, queer, non-binary, low-income, and other less represented folks. That is some of the reasoning behind my joining the East Hampton Development and Industrial Commission two-plus years ago as well. There should be more women involved in thinking with the city planner and other municipal offices about how to support a thriving economy for businesses and residents. There should be more young or young-ish people, too. I know my hair is confusing, but I am not yet forty. That work on EDIC is endlessly rewarding. I've gotten to know the ins and outs of how the city pursues funding for worthy projects, to think through possible approaches to accessory dwelling units, co-write a grant that will get us expert design help for wayfinding in our downtown and mill areas. I've learned that a holistic view of our zoning will make your eyes spin in your head, which really emphasizes the importance of realigning it with our current trajectory for a walkable, livable downtown. EDIC's expansive mission makes coordination with other city committees really important, including the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. We recently were reminded by a housing study that thirty percent of East Hampton households pay more for housing than they can afford, disproportionately affecting our neighbors with low and very low incomes. This should, and I know does, worry all of us, especially as housing prices continue to increase, regardless of the fact that incomes are dependent on the wider economy, and certainly during COVID, this situation has worsened for many. I worry about folks like my former neighbor, Hal Corey, who lived in East Hampton for over thirty years, but couldn't stay in our city when he wanted to downsize, where so many of his friends and family are, because there was nowhere for him to go. We have a lot of tricky gaps to fill in across types of housing, while we also have pretty limited developable land. But designing solutions that make housing realistically available to a wide array of incomes is essential, because an economically and generationally diverse population is what built this East Hampton and what will sustain it. Naturally, housing is all of a piece with taxation, public services, with how businesses make their way, and those intertwined pieces of the picture are my bread and butter. As a councillor, I would want to work on and solicit solutions for these issues from constituents, lead and step back in collaboration with fellow councillors, and I am great at finding the signal in the noise. Finally, my professional skills as an interviewer, researcher, and aggregator of information, plus my nature as a generally curious person, are some of the best features I offer this council, and they're the same ones I use in my leadership of the EDIC and the nonprofit board I've chaired for several years. My dedication to this city would show up as excellent listening, concern for the representation of often unheard perspectives, and a willingness to press people on their reasoning. Like budgeting, good policy should be principled, founded on a knowledge of the whole landscape and thoughtful about long-term outcomes. Our city has a lot going for it in the way of natural beauty, a longstanding support for the arts, and the joy of regularly seeing our neighbors and familiar faces at small businesses even during COVID as people are struggling. But East Hampton's riches are in its residents. So I congratulate the council on bringing this super abundance of qualified candidates tonight. And I'd like the public to know that even just as your hyper-involved neighbor, I am interested in your concerns, your great ideas, and your hopes for what we can continue becoming together.
Wow. Right on time there, Gwen. Thank you. Paul St Pierre.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul St Pierre. If you've followed me or are familiar with my work, you will know I am committed, and you will know what I bring to the table. I'm a fighter. I'm a creative thinker, and I am a champion of the vulnerable people in this city. I started my journey in public service a little over three years ago, and the things I have accomplished, I can barely believe they are real. I thought when I ran for city council and lost that there wasn't gonna be a place for me. I could have just gone away, but I stayed. I made a promise, and I kept it, and it has not been easy. I don't fit in with every person. I have my own voice. If you choose me, you can be sure we're going to disagree on something, and you may not like it very much, because I argue my point well. But when we do agree, I'm gonna be your best friend, and you're gonna love having me on the council. I remember sitting in a meeting and hearing that Pepin School was a great place to build some luxury apartments or even a parking lot. And that wasn't okay with me. So I put together a proposal to save Pepin School and keep that building in city hands to bring in Head Start, so families don't have to lose that program. We can bring in the seniors center, so seniors aren't crammed into that tiny old post office building like afterthoughts in our great master plan. And we're gonna sell that old post office building and use the funds to repair Pepin and let an actual business use that space and contribute to our economy. There are a lot of things we can do with Pepin. I think you're familiar with my plan. But more importantly, I hope you know that this idea and my advocacy brought together huge parts of this community. And at the end of the day, it's the council who will decide what happens to that building. I have put in the work to give us a path forward that everyone can be proud of. I had another plan once. It was kind of a dream, really, that East Hampton would build a fiber-optic internet system owned and operated by the people, a public utility. The only one among you at that time who supported me was councillor Peak, and I'm grateful for that. But when it came time to vote on a ballot question that could make that dream a reality, every single councillor supported it twice, because I put in the work. And we brought that proposal to the people on a ballot question, and they supported it to over eighty percent of the voters, because we put in the work, and I advocated for what I believe, and I have never given up bringing that dream to life. My record has proven I am a candidate of change. You shouldn't choose me and expect that I will be on board with the status quo if the status quo isn't working. There was a constituent earlier this year who asked me to take a look at water and sewer, because they were worried everybody was about to get screwed. I told him there is no way to avoid water and sewer increases, but I would take a look at it. And yeah, we were about to get screwed, and the city council was being thrown under the bus. And people were angry, because they were hurting, and they needed to see a path forward that didn't put the entire burden on them. And the night before that meeting, I was doing dishes, and it dawned on me a better way, an equitable way to fund those repairs, which shifted an enormous part of that burden away from single families and farmers and renters and onto the wealthiest property owners in town. I put in the work and I did the math, and that night at that meeting, I'm just gonna say, I brought the house down. And I stood up for every one of you. And after that meeting, they threw out that DPW plan, and the only plan they worked on going forward was the St Pierre Plan. And thank God for that, because we needed that. So I am not the status quo. And I don't want you to think that the only reason I would make a great city councillor is because I have the resume, because you know I have that. I'm a young man, but I have a full life of experience. I have known struggle and hardship from the day I was born, gasping for breath with serious health complications. I didn't have a first day of school at the same school as the previous year until I was in fifth grade. My family was poor. We moved around a lot. My mother, she married a Hispanic man when I was a kid. I grew up in a multiracial home. I have a Puerto Rican little sister. And I don't always talk about that, but I think it's important, because if you are part of the Latin American community, you gotta know, I'm here for you. You don't have to be embarrassed or feel like you can't talk to me, because I'm a white guy and maybe I'm good with words.
Oh, just a few more seconds, okay?
If you are a parent and you need your child to translate for you, that is my family. I know that life, and I will fight for you. There are so many other things I could talk about that I've been a part of. I'm glad that some of these other candidates support some of my initiatives and some of my ideas, because I've been working on them and sacrificing my time. And a lot of the things I've been working on, the council will have to take up in the future as soon as next month, and I hope you value the work we've done and take them seriously. I have so much to offer, so much experience and insight to bring to the council, which the council does not already have. I hope you choose me, and I will be an excellent councillor. Thank you, Peg.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to be fair, to give everybody the same amount of time to speak. Okay, so now we will go into, councillors may pose questions of individual candidates. We will start again with Kay. Do any of the councillors have any questions for Kay? Councillor Eric.
I'll have questions for all the candidates, President.
Okay.
Kay, oops, sorry. Switching back to Zoom. Great to see you here. You know, as you mentioned, you and I have partnered in other efforts in the city. You spoke about the question three resolution, and I really appreciate you bringing that to my attention, and we both worked with another great group of people to get East Hampton Pride going, looking forward to the pandemic being over, so that we'll feel that happen again. So as a city councillor, you immediately end up having a bevy of municipal partners across the city, including police, fire, DPW. I know that public safety is very important to the city, and I wonder how you will partner with your new municipal colleagues in police and fire as a city councillor.
Thank, thank you, councillors Eric. I think that my basic rule of engagement is always if people treat me with respect, I'm gonna treat them with respect. Even though I may have, I may have issues with the institution of policing, doesn't mean that I haven't had conversations with Chief Alberti or with other, you know, with other officers. I feel like whatever solutions we come up with, it's gonna take a lot of work, and it's gonna take a lot of working across the aisle. You know, what you may not know is I actually grew up in a family of, with, with a lot of, with a lot of first responders. My grandfather was a, was a police officer. My cousins were firefighters and police officers. You know, does that mean that I can't raise problems with the institution when I see them? Absolutely not. It doesn't mean that I can't have conversations and work to find the correct solution for our city. I believe that I have the capacity to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kay? Councillor Peak?
I'm gonna have the same question for every councillor. And so Kay, it's a little unfair. I'm gonna drop this on you first, and then everyone else is gonna get a preview, but but I, I couldn't come up with five interesting questions, and there's probably just one thing that's been eating at me for the last year, so I wanted to get my, each of you's opinion. And that's that the city clearly has a lack of affordable housing, not just in East Hampton, really the whole Pioneer Valley in general has a clear lack of affordable housing. And what is one thing that you believe the city should be doing to rectify this issue?
One of the things that I've, I've been super impressed by the, by both the city and the mayor is the, is the capacity to get grants for, for things, you know? I mean, right now, and this isn't specifically about housing, but I feel like if your business is not secure, and that's your livelihood, your housing is also not secure. So the, with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is doing to get CARES Act money for businesses to support the businesses, is then gonna trickle down and support employees. It's then gonna trickle down and support people's housing. I am, I am really excited to dive in, and one of the things I think that I have learned is, I don't always have all the answers. I would love to pull in the people that do have the answers. What I do have the capacity for is knowing how to connect with people that do have answers. You know, Gwen. knowing how to connect with people that do have answers. You know, Gwen, everything that you said is absolutely fantastic. And should I be appointed? I would, I would be happy to reach out for, for the people. Paul's obviously got a lot of plans as well. So while I may not have all the answers at the top of, you know, the top of my, at the tip of my tongue, I feel like I have a strong skill in networking that will help me bring the people together that have those answers.
Thank you.
Councillor Rosschaw. You're on mute.
Hello, Kay. My question is, should you get onto the council, what is something that you'd be excited to be working on in terms of an area?
Yeah, other than what I've said already about supporting, about supporting small business. I, I am, I sat in a little bit late, apologies councillor Peak, but I sat in on the, on the Rules Committee the other day talking about reviewing city ordinance is for bias. So I think that that's, that's something that's probably going to be a long haul. It's, I mean, it's a minimum of a year to review that. And, and I was also excited to see that eventually that's going to lead to things like, super exciting things like parking and zoning. But those are things that can, can disproportionately affect marginalized communities if things are not zoned in such a way to, to make things accessible to them, right? So that can, I mean, that can lead to, lead to a lot of other advantages. And there's my dog loudly drinking water in the background and my apologies to everybody. She can't stay out of the meetings. Yeah, so I'd be excited to work on that. I'd be excited to, you know, to partner with everybody to try to make sure we see our city safely and wholly through this pandemic. You know, I think that the, the effects are going to be long ranging and I think that there's going to be, need to be a lot of work done to try to shore up everybody in the community, not just businesses, but also local residences. And also how we can work for, for further property tax. Already working on the senior tax abatement. And hopefully voting everybody for CPA to be able to use to, to offset some senior and low income housing taxes. So I think that's just a first step really, is getting that voted in and taking it from there.
Any other councillors with questions for Kay Collins? Councillor Derby.
So I, hey Kay, how's it going? I had, I had a question prepared and I just, like a question just popped into my head at the last second. So I figured I'll give it a shot and maybe I'll ask everybody if it works out. So Kay, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the, the term nimbyism. But nimbyism is, is basically a short way of saying not in my backyard. And it's something that happens on the council relatively frequently. And so I'm just wondering, you know, how would you balance somebody's concern about something that's happening in their neighborhood with the potential overall benefit to the entire city? That could be very positive. So I guess that's my question.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I'm very, I'm very familiar with that. And some of the council, many council meetings I've sat through, that's definitely something that's come up. I think that education is key. You know, I think that if people, particularly city or government officials come off as being high handed and like they know better than everybody else, that it's not going to translate well to the community. And yet at times there are, you know, part, part of what my job is to train people to relay sometimes unpleasant information to people that they can't, they can't access the things they want to access the way, the way they want to and at the speed that they want to access them. I really think that educating people, I've always been a super curious person too, or really, or really related to that, to that comment that one of the other candidates made. I have always wanted to know why when I'm given an answer. So I have always endeavored to be the person that's going to sit down and take the time to explain to people the reasoning behind a decision to try to bring them, you know, in rather than, than shutting them down.
Thank you. Any other councillors with questions for Kay Collins? JP, I see you went off mute. Did you have a question?
Yes, I did. And Kay, for some, I'll preface, I had an opportunity to speak with every candidate. And speaking with Kay was very enlightening, very, it was very, very personal today. So I really appreciate that. And you really showed, I think, how you reach out to people and help to bring people together. So I really appreciated that very much. Unfortunately, we have five good candidates here from people who are very committed to our community. And my question is four people will go away from the election and not be elected to the city council. What will you be doing if you are one of the four for the next year or two?
Oh my goodness, JP, I think from, from what everybody has said and from what I know of the other candidates, I don't think any of us will just go away. You know that I will not hesitate to darken your doorstep and continue to work with the groups in our community to try to, you know, to find ways to support, support East Hampton and make it thrive. It will not be an endpoint for me by any stretch of the imagination and, and you may well see me on a future ballot.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Kay? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Kay. Appreciate it. You survived. Okay, Erica Flood, is there any questions for Erica from the councillors?
Hello, I'm off mute.
Any councillor have a question for Erica Flood? Councillor Zerrit. Councillor Zerrit.
Thank you. Candidate Flood, and I apologize to candidate Collins that I called her by her first name. So sorry for stepping out of order. Candidate Flood. So you've, you're, we've all reviewed your resume and your letter and your letters of support. And we're certainly, the city is familiar with you at large, well, not at large, for precinct two, for running against my colleague Omar Gomez in the last election. And I think there were questions about why you did so. And I think some potential unfair accusations of why. But can you speak to that briefly and also talk about the relationship and collaboration that has evolved from that process?
Yes, certainly. Honestly, I grew up in precinct two for, I, I should say, I know there was a Gazette article that highlighted all of the candidates and most especially, it spoke to the fact that I am fifth generation in the house that I'm in. And I'm a new city girl, as we say here in New City. I grew up here in precinct two. This has always been home. No matter where we've ended up, we've always had a place to stay here. My uncle Walter, who grew up here, he was born here. He brought us to Sacred Heart Church over on Franklin Street. Like this is where we've always been. So I always identified with precinct two. So when I ran, my affinity was for precinct two. It is, it is the, one of the largest precincts in the city and it has the most, the highest population of renters, which I can identify with. So this is why I ran for precinct two. I wasn't running against Omar. I have, I've always held high respect for Omar. And in fact, even when I lost the election, I felt like the best loser ever because Omar and I have found a path together to collaborate on projects. And I'm very grateful for that. We are moving things forward that I was hopeful would happen and we've, we've found a nice way to like work together. Whether I'm on city council or not, I've, I've felt very positive about the influence that I've made. So basically I ran for city precinct two because I thought naturally this is, this was where I belonged. The at-large seat felt, felt grand for me. I mean, do, you know, as, really as like a single mom in a working class family, like to do an out-large campaign, like when you're first entering politics, like that feels like a lot of money. So to start where you're at is, that's where I, that's where I am. But I'm really happy that I started where I'm at and actually it's led to a lot of roads. And I'm very grateful for the support that Omar has lented me and the collaboration that we've come to find. And you know, from here on out, like I want to stay connected and do whatever I can for every constituent. And one of the best parts of the feedback that I received from the election was I had a lot of people who were out of precinct who would have liked to have voted for me. And I, I just never would have imagined it actually, to be honest. Like I'm a new city girl. I was trying to address the issues from here. And I realized that the issues here actually resonate with everybody and there's nowhere to go but up from here is kind of the thing. It's like, it feels a little daunting to run at large. But if I don't gain this seat right now, I will be running at large in the next election, election cycle. So that's, that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Erica? Councillor Peak?
I'm just going to keep asking the same question. This is something that you've expressed some interest in for sure. But I'm curious, what is one thing that you believe the city should do to rectify the issue of lack of affordable housing in East Hampton?
Well, if I'm to be honest, like there's one, when I, when I began my campaign, I met with a number of people and there's actually a fix that I feel that could help us all. And this is looking at the available, okay, so East Hampton just literally doesn't have enough developable property left. And in some of our properties, we have them zoned as industrial and perhaps it'll never be industrial property. So one of the proposals that I was met with was incorporating the senior housing overlay. And if we look too hadly and what they have done with the same mechanism, I feel we could adjust, we could, we could address this. There's properties out towards like Big Y in Southampton, which are still in East Hampton. And those properties are still designated as industrial, but we could wait forever and industrial might never come in. And there's vast acreage and it's near services. There's now an urgent care out there. There is obviously Big Y, like there. So I'm, I would like to look at alternative zoning in terms of like senior housing overlay to address this issue. And the reason for that is because there are a number of seniors living in essentially what's too much house for them. Their families have left. They have four or five bedrooms and they need one or maybe two, right? So if we can get them into something that doesn't need maintenance on their part, that's safe, that's affordable, then we can free up housing for younger families. And those families who want to stay in Southampton and we're losing them to other towns, there, the real estate market will really free up. So the senior housing overlay is something that I would really like to see us explore.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Erica Flood? Councillor Derby?
Hey Erica, oh, sorry.
Candidate Flood.
Candidate Flood. So I, I guess I'll ask you a similar question. Maybe, hopefully I refined it a little bit. But you know, how would, how would you handle a situation in which the city potentially could have a, a large benefit, but would impact some of the neighbors of that project? What, what process would you go through?
I think the most important thing is the dialogue between the neighborhood that is impacted and really listening to the concerns of the neighborhood. Change is difficult for a lot of people. I'm really good with change. I've, I've faced change my entire life, so I'm kind of roll with it. But I know that when I was taking care of my uncle, the biggest, like the most interesting thing that he ever said to me through all of it was people think change is good and I disagree. And I was like, what do you mean? So I think there are times when people are faced with change and it's so challenging. And now I'm a, as a Medicare advisor and a healthcare advisor, I see people are being laid off. They're transitioning into Medicare, like there's so much, like it's so much change. They don't, they don't know what the next step is going to bring them. They don't know what it's going to cost them. They don't know what it's going to be, mean for their coverage, all this. This all translates to even neighbors, like what does this mean? How much privacy will I have? Like who's going to move here? Like, is it going to be okay? And like, I gotta say, in, during the times of COVID, I have had three new neighbors in my neighborhood and we have the most amazing neighborhood pod. And all it took was like, as each new person moved in, going and knocking on the door and saying, welcome to the neighborhood, I'm happy to meet you, you know? Just putting it out there. But I think that if we have information, like whether or not it's a big development, what is that going to mean for my way of living? Or whether or not it's like the next house next door to me turns over, who's going to be my new neighbor on the other side of the fence? All of us have to find a way to deal with change and dialogue is the way. So how do we, through the process, whether it's through the planning board or the zoning board, how do we make sure that the process is the most open process and transparent process available, that people can voice their opinions and their concerns? I hope that's clear enough. I don't know. I think it's about dialogue and helping people through the transition, right? Did that answer your question? Yeah.
Any other questions for candidate Flood? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Jared Hinkle, are there folks who have questions of Jared? Councillor Zerrit.
Thank you, President Coniff. Candidate Hinkle. Thank you for, thank you for showing your interest and thank you councillor Rist for nominating Mr. Hinkle. Jared, we had the pleasure of getting to know each other a little bit on the campaign trail in 2017. I was very interested in your, the perspective that you brought to the at-large race then and certainly equally interested now. Thank you for your service to our country as a member of the armed forces. How do you feel that your background, and correct me if I'm wrong, everyone else here, I do not think that we have any other members of the military currently on the council. How do you feel that your, some of your unique background, a member of the military and other involvement, other groups would help strengthen the council and bring new perspective?
Well, I think as a veteran, it would, it basically helps me problem solve. I look at the big picture and the small picture at the same time. You know, while you're in the military, you have to look on what's in front of you, but what's beyond that also. So I think looking at, you know, the problems of our community and actually the good in our community, you know, is also. Excuse me.
Okay. Any, any other questions for any of the councillors?
I have a question, Jared. When you, when you look across, you know, the landscape of this community and I know that you look at it with a lens of a veteran, are there things specifically in this community that we can, that you would like to see done differently with, with respect to veterans? Or do you have any ideas or? Or or do you have any ideas or plans to address that community?
Well, you know, I don't just look at it through a veterans. I'm also a father. I'm a homeowner, so I have a broadband what I have to look at. But as a veteran, I think our community does a very, does very well for the veterans. I think the state does very well. Um, compared to other states and other veterans that I've talked to, other individuals that I've served with, that East Hampton and Massachusetts does a lot for their veterans. I know the American Legion does a lot, you know, and other organizations, you know, every day, you know, I drive through the town, I see the DAV van driving, you know, our elderly veterans and our disabled veterans to their appointments. You know, so I think that that the, you know, that the community does stand behind their veterans.
Good. That's good. Any other, oh, Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, and thank you, Mr. Hinkle, for your service. Um, you know, I think it's important to acknowledge that we are a Purple Heart community. And um, and you know, one of my greatest influences growing up was a a Vietnam veteran that lived in East Hampton, who was a Purple Heart recipient and Silver Star recipient. So thank you for your service. And and I'll just continue with my, with my, my question, because I think it's a good one. Um, in in respect to the fact that you, there's tough decisions to be made sometimes. Um, and so, you know, how would you balance uh a project that came in front of you that had a lot of benefit for the community, but potentially was impacting people that lived in the immediate vicinity?
Well, again, you have to look at the big picture, but you also have to look at, you know, the the community around, you know, is it gonna, is the benefit going to outweigh? You know, way that the community looks at it. You know, if you have a business that wants to come into into our town, but the people are against it, then, you know, it might be good economically for the town for taxes and stuff like that. But if the community is not behind it, then I don't think it's good for the community.
Um, any other, Counselor Peak?
Uh, thank you, Jared. Uh, I was curious. Um, what do you think is one thing that the city should be doing uh to uh increase uh the amount of affordable housing in the city?
Yeah, it's interesting that you brought that up because uh, our oldest son just graduated high school this year and um, you know, he's in the workforce and him and his friend want to get their own place. And I think that's great that they want to do that. So we started looking around at the prices of rentals and everything and just breaking everything down to him. When me and my wife lived in Northampton, we were fortunate to live in an apartment complex that based our rent off our income. And that actually provided us the ability to save up to purchase our house. And I think it's the responsibility of the town and the business owners and the landlords to make it affordable. Because if you have more people living in town, you have more people spending money in town, which means you have more money in town to do the infrastructure that you need.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Candidate Hinkle? Not seeing any. Thank you, Jared. Uh, questions now for Gwen Morrisey. Does anyone have any questions for Gwen? Wow. Counselor Zaret?
I'm really trying not to be the first one to speak, but uh anyhow, um, Candidate Morrisey. Uh, Gwen, it's great to see you here, uh, just as with the rest of the candidates. I'm really thrilled to see such a great field. Um, and um, you and I have um, worked together a little bit, uh, certainly on the 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 school ballot initiative. Um, and um, have kind of rotated each other's orbits uh during the last campaign season. Uh, when you managed President Coniff's campaign and you touched upon coordinating with um, Counsel Rothschild as well. So we know you definitely have two wonderfully solid established relationship in the council. How, could you tell me or us a little bit about your process about um, how you typically go about establishing professional collaborative relationships and how you would see yourself working with the rest of the counselors on the council?
We can't really hear you, Gwen. Can you?
I'm gonna turn it up. A weird speaker microphone thing. Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna call myself an egghead, which is what my dad said. Uh, all the kids in his high school called kids who were friends with all the other kids. Um, so one of my um, skills, I think, uh, and maybe it's not a skill, maybe it's just a um, I don't know, it feels like a feature, uh, is getting to know people enough to say, hey, I know a little something about this person's real life and I know a little something about what this person feels deeply about. And that's enough for me to get going on something bigger where we're going to find uh something useful to do together. One of my favorite things about my job at the collaborative is um, being able to work with so many different departments. We do so many things at the collaborative in Northampton and I have projects with almost all of them. And that means that I am always finding ways to connect other people to other people. I think that a stronger network is what makes a community um, as uh, resourceful as it can be. And so creating those relationships, uh, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like work to me. It doesn't actually feel that intentional to to call it a process feels disingenuous. It's more like, hello colleagues, here's who I am. I will be open with you and I hope you will be open with me. Um, and I, that's, that's worked out so far.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Derby?
Uh, Candidate Morrisey, thank you so much for agreeing, well, I guess being strong-armed into uh, accepting this potential nomination. Um, so I I will, I'll ask you, you know, similarly to how I asked others, there's going to be situations where you're going to have to make tough decisions um, that, you know, might make some people angry. So if there is a project that could potentially benefit, um, you know, a large group of people in East Hampton versus people that have a vested interest in their space, how would you handle that?
Um, I think there are a couple of ways to think about that. And one is to start from the perspective of people are um, more resistant to and more afraid of things they don't completely understand. And knowing at all is better than being blindsided. Um, that's one thing. The other thing is to remove whatever sense there could be of um, urgency or force. And to, as Erica said, and as Kay said in this chair, it's like you're going to have a dialogue, conversations that are open and solutions oriented. I think in those situations, rather than getting to a point where you're like, and here is the answer, now you will live with it, you do the work of innovating with people in the first place and you, you yes and them so that they're part of the whole conversation. Because the more people are involved in creating solutions to some of our challenges, um, or just feeling like they're part of the conversation at all, even if they aren't actually going to have a lot um, of of weight in the final decision, is something that helps reduce tension and helps make people feel like um, it was worth their being involved. So I think that um, there are, I think you're hearing a theme from all of us. I think that when you start hearing a theme like that, the answer is uh, transparent dialogue where you um, from the beginning include people uh, to the extent that that takes some of the sting out of change.
Counselor Peak?
Thank you. Um, Gwen, you actually highlighted this a little bit in your speech, but since I've been asking everybody, I was hoping you could sort of expand on what, what's, what's just one thing that you think the city uh should be doing to rectify the issue of uh affordable housing shortages in East Hampton?
Uh, well, I appreciate the question and I'm not going to give you the answer to that question because there isn't one single thing that you can do that is going to fix the enormity of the problem. Because the problem is widespread across uh, the quote unquote food chain of housing. Um, so affordable across the lifespan is is different for a young, single mother. For example, affordable is a different question for a senior who is now on a limited income. Those things, depending on what assets they're bringing to it in the first place. And um, I think that there are both uh zoning related things. I mean, what, what Kay and what Erica and what everyone has said is on point. There are things that we should be doing at the level of zoning that would um, open up possibilities. Um, infill within existing lots, changing some of our expectations for setbacks, our things that are real and matter. Like fifteen feet versus zero feet actually makes a difference for some buildings in our city. Um, and I think as well, there are really cool ideas in um, not the the legislative side of things, but social programs that would bring um, smaller families together with um, seniors maybe in existing those four or five bedroom homes where you have then a mutually cooperative relationship and they are supporting one another to be in a single family home, maybe that now has um, a chosen family as part of it that isn't by by blood or birthright a family, but that gets to be part of one another's lives and is um, developing its own little community in and of itself. I think it's, it's um, worth paying attention to that it's not, it's not just Western Mass. All of Massachusetts has an affordable housing problem. The state is not making investments in affordable housing at this point. They are more about uh, just single family homeownership. And that is well and good. And um, there are creative things that need to happen in all facets of how we think about um, how housing gets built in the first place and what our expectations should really be for, at what point have we reached a density that people are no longer happy about? Um, what, at what point are we uh overloaded? Are we putting too much of a burden on our natural resources? Um, I mean, I think one of the things that I talked about with with a couple of people recently is that I don't think that we want to head down the road of where Northampton currently finds themselves. I think we need to to do a lot of things. There needs to be a holistic plan. The Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership is doing some of that. Almost every other committee in town and the city council has things to contribute to that degree of thing. Sorry, I couldn't give you one.
Any other, Counselor Rothschild?
Oh, hello Gwen. Um, I was wondering from through your work on the EDIC, is there something that you've been working on there and are some perspective you've gained from being chairing that committee that you, if you were to be on the council, that you could, you'd like to move to the council, you see it a way of a way forward through the council, something you could continue to work on?
I mean, I think a lot of that is in fact related to um, thinking creatively about getting the rest of the community involved and identifying some of the solutions to our affordable housing problems, which are related so much to zoning. And what do we have expectations for related to businesses in our community? How do we decide that we want um, both businesses and residences to coexist in the downtown area? What does that mean to make those decisions? So um, I think all, I mean, EDIC exists to some degree to serve as a as a filter that is a pre-city council, like here, we did a lot of this thinking. Now have some, have some um, digested thoughts that will give you a sense of what is possible and what is feasible. And um, I I value that. And at that, at that point that I was sitting on the council, then it would be, well, this is useful. I have all this background knowledge now about this. I'm going to need more. You continue to have those conversations and and put a little um, put a little fire under EDIC, under, under all of our committees to say, no, really, we love your ideas. What are they? Can you filter some of these? Here are some of my questions. Can you help us with them?
Uh, any other, Counselor Kuzinski?
Gwen, I'm sorry. I I I call everybody by their first name. If you prefer Candidate Morrisey, I'd be happy to. But uh, I think it's a kind of a, kind of a personal connection with every person. Please feel free to call me JP. I I was uh, very interested in in your ideas about distinguishing the difference between the futures of Northampton and the future of East Hampton. You had spoke to that and maybe you could tell us a bit more about that differentiation.
So I think one of the um, one of the magnificent things about Northampton, as I experienced it 20 years ago when I was in college, was that if there was always something happening and it was always very exciting. And I never felt um, I, there wasn't any part of town that I was like, ah, I don't, I don't know what happens here. Is this, is this a safe place for me to be? And um, I think that there are issues with, um, what do you call them? Landlords in Northampton, there are issues with uh, the challenging food industry there. Northampton became such a foodie town and we are such a foodie town right now and it's very exciting. And what does it mean when some of your most popular places go under? What does it mean when um, storefronts become vacant? And and stay that way for a long time? What does it mean when there's um, very prominent underinvestment in the facade of your buildings, just in the the pride or lack thereof that seems to occur? Like when the Calvin Theater was just the Alvin? That's, I don't get excited about that. Um, so thinking about um, ways to make sure that we are well-rounded, like a, like a good stock portfolio, I'm told, um, is really important. And I think that we do that work um, as little pockets within our committees and in the mayor's office and in the city planner office and on council. I think that there's this already really rich set of perspectives that are thinking about what um, would make us well-rounded and not impervious to economic damage like, like COVID has made true for most of the country, but um, so much more resilient. And I think that Northampton is really struggling with that. And they're, I mean, they're struggling in part because they, they are this really interesting cultural Mecca that lots of people come to. But now they're coming for maybe different reasons because stores have moved on and it's just, there's a, you want to have this sense that there's a, there's a bench of new and exciting things coming. And I think Northampton is in a, in a holding pattern right now that that um, I don't think they love. And I think it, it may get better. And I think that there are great um, city councils and committees there doing great work to think through this as well. And I think that it's true in a lot of uh, post-industrial cities that um, managed to revitalize in the eighties and nineties. And I I think that we can learn from um, that and lots of other cities that are experiencing great success like Worcester is seeing now.
Any other questions for Gwen? Okay, thank you, Gwen. Uh, next up is Paul St Pierre. Any questions for Paul? I'm looking at you, Owen.
I mean, no one else is raising their hands and and I know that my fellow counselors have a couple canned questions. So should I just assume that those are coming after mine?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Candidate St Pierre, Paul. Um, uh, just trying to um, embrace some of the formality of the process. Uh, so Paul, you at times, I know a couple of years ago, prior to your running for Precinct Two, had talked about running for mayor. Uh, you then ran for Precinct Two um, against Counselor Gomez. Um, you did not run in the last race. You have spoken uh intermittently about running for mayor. Um, and here you are as a candidate for a city councilor at large. Um, if you were to be voted into the seat, would this be temporary or would you intend to run again at large in the next election?
That's a great question. Thank you, uh, Counselors Eric. I certainly am not going to make any commitments as to what I would do um, at that time. Um, that is a a dream. That's like a real life dream for me um, to to It's like a real life dream for me to to do that. When, when I had talked about it, you know, before I ran for for council, really, I expected I would have zero chance of ever having any shot. But I had ideas and I wanted to bring them out and I wanted a platform and I wanted, I wanted to be heard. And so that's why I went down that that, I just threw it out there, really. But being involved so much in the city, the city council is so important. It's so vital to how our municipality operates. It's a way to get an incredible amount of experience and to do an incredible amount of good for people. I want to be wherever I can do the most good for the most people. And if that's the city council, I would love the opportunity to come in and and just make this a good place to live.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Paul? Councillor Peak?
Hi, Paul. I am going to ask you the same question I ask everybody else, which is there's a clear lack of affordable housing in the area. And I'm really looking forward, what's one thing that you would do to start to chip away at that problem?
Thank you councillor Peak. That's something I've, that has been important to me for a long time. Has been a working on housing initiatives for senior housing and for affordable housing. That's something that Gwen and I have worked on in the EDIC. That's something that I've been working on through the Comprehensive Housing Needs Assessment, which, you know, is still in process. We're going to finish that up in in November. One of the things that I would do, yes, for one specific thing, I think we have to look at zoning. I know it's been mentioned, we should be looking at by right development for senior housing and affordable housing in specific zoned places where we want those buildings. There are developers who would like to bring those those facilities here, but we have a complicated permitting process, which sometimes and oftentimes requires them to make investments, to purchase property and to hold those, hold money up for an undetermined amount of time. It could be six months, it could be a year with no guarantee they'll be able to move forward. So I think we can look at our whole city and identify particular zones where we say, hey, we want these buildings. If you want to build those, we want them here and we're going to make it easy for you to get that done because we need that. And we really do. If we can't get affordable units in East Hampton, then we're just essentially, the only way for us to grow is to continue pushing out the seniors. So we have houses for young families and that's not acceptable. We have to invest in our future without pushing people out to Westfield who are kicking our butt with senior housing right now. So there is, that is a huge thing that we can do that I've been working on, that I've been sacrificing my Thursday nights because it's important to me. And and I know you guys are going to work on it or hopefully we all could work on it in the near future. I want it to be successful. I want us to succeed.
Any councillor Derby?
All right, so since I'm in a can, I think I think it's important for me to step out of that can for a moment. So I'm going to, I'm going to change it up a little bit, if that's all right. Thank you, Mr. St Pierre. I I think, so, you know, it's interesting to me as as someone who's been on the council for a long time to talk about, you know, senior housing and affordable housing. You know, at at one time we did in our zoning, you know, I've been on zoning for seventeen years. And at one time we had an ordinance that allowed for fifty-five and over housing to get bonus density bonuses. And and, you know, one of the reasons we rescinded that was because builders were basically forcing in fifty-five and older housing to get the density bonuses and then reaping the rewards of those density bonuses without giving any incentive or any affordable housing in return. So we 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 actually, we took that out of the zoning. And I'm just curious if you have any thoughts around, you know, what we could do to encourage builders to, you know, create more housing that might be multi-generational, that would also include things like affordability and accessibility, which is something that we haven't talked about. And I think it's important in in the city. So just curious.
That's a really good question. You, that's a lot of good information there, too. So having mixed housing or mixed residential developments is is amazing. That I know we have Treehouse, which serves some of that role already in the city. And it's an amazing place and it's an asset to our city. As far as density bonuses, I would need more information as to what, what specifically that was, what kind of bonuses those were for developers and why that was incentivizing them to do something, which wasn't really exactly what we wanted. Maybe it was like kind of what we wanted. Maybe that's something that could be looked at again. There's, you know, there's a lot of different ways to go about that. I think that the really important part is we're having this conversation. We're going to bring everyone to the table because this this affects us all. And going forward, it's it's imperative that we address this, bringing senior housing and affordable housing in. I know that the property, actually, my own, my own unit is a is an affordable housing unit. I was able to get my start here in East Hampton, actually, because I received a grant as well through the CPA. When I was in my my mid twenties, I was in a, I had a very awful experience where I had moved into an apartment and two months later it burned to the ground. And I lost my whole life at that time. And I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to come here to East Hampton and to contribute and to have gotten my start and built a life here, thanks to the CPA. And also thanks to, you know, the fact that ten years prior, my, I live in a condo, my condo development brought in affordable units because there was an incentive from the city to do that. So it made it happen. It gave me a life. When I got that grant, I said, I'm going to pay this back to the people of East Hampton. So many times they won't believe it, you know? And that's why I'm involved and that's why I'm here. I'm keeping my promises.
Any other questions for Paul? Okay, I think we have concluded the Q and A portion of our program this evening. Thank you to all the candidates for your amazing responses, your thoughts, your ideas. We really are in quite good hands, no matter how this ends up tonight. So very pleased to see all of you here and and I'm kind of excited about the future. So thank you for stepping up. All right, let me kind of give a little bit of a rundown to the council on on where we go from here tonight. So as I mentioned before, Dan Gilbert will be our vote teller. And so what will happen going forward now is that we're trying to maintain transparency and as well as document what we are doing. So to bridge the gap and because we're not all in one room, the process will be that each city councillor will email their votes, one through five. And your your email has to have, one, a name, two, a name. Don't just put the names from top to bottom, put the number next to it in your email. You're going to send that email to both the city clerk, Barbara LaMombard, and to Dan Gilbert. We're not going to open those those ballots until all eight emails have been received and Dan will validate that. Then what's going to happen is Dan will review each one to make sure that there are five candidates on each one. You are not allowed to skip any. You have to rank all five per our city council rules and charter, I believe. So you have to, you have to vote for all five and rank all five. I I'm going to ask you all not to put any commentary in your email about, you know, I love this person. I don't love this person, just the names of the vote, it's a ballot and your name. So at this time, are there any questions from the councillors on how we are going to proceed? Councillor Kuzinski?
I think I followed all of that, Madam President, except the part that said we must rank all five. I have, I have no problems in ranking all five personally, but I don't think there is a charter provision which requires that we must vote for five. There is a charter provision that we must fill the vacancy and the council, well, we must fill the vacancy as a council. So I, and I don't think the rule said that we must vote for five unless we all decide that we want to change the rule. So I just wanted to to put that forward.
Our our rule, our city council rule eight B states that each city councillor shall express a preference for each candidate ranked from first to last. And these preferences shall be recorded by the clerk of the council. So as I read that, shall usually means you have to do it. And preference for each candidate pretty clearly defines that you have to do it for each candidate.
I guess my point would be there may be a preference, someone may have a preference for two candidates and that is indeed their ranked preference. So I would maintain that the requirement does not say must.
I think that's generally in the interpretation shall equals must. But I will, I will let both councillor Peak, if you have some comment to make as well?
Yeah, so what it says is that they shall express preference for each candidate ranked from first to last. So that seems, I mean, I don't know. For for whatever it's worth, that was the intent of the rule and I feel like it's sufficiently clearly worded.
Councillor Rist?
Just for perspective, when we were discussing the charter, the word may and shall was debated constantly. And the word shall, as defined and interpreted by a lawyer, would mean you must do it. It's not an option. So I would agree with councillor Peak that we all have to put one through five preferences per our rules. It's not in the charter, but it is in our rules. And it will be fair to the ranked choice voting method if we have everybody do the same thing, I would think. I don't know, but that's my opinion.
Councillor Kuzinski?
I have, I have absolutely no problem with with that procedure. I just wanted it stated that it is not part of our charter and a charter requirement.
Fair enough, yep, thank you. I would agree with that. Okay, any other questions before we get councillor Peak? I'm sorry, councillor Zaret.
I'm honored. Just to clarify, President Coniff, the email shall contain our name and then the numbers one through five vertically. And then horizontal to each of those numbers are the ranked candidates. And then we email that to both the clerk Barbara LaMombard as well to Daniel Gilbert in that, in the same email. So I just want to make sure.
They'll be copied in the same email. You will send one email.
Okay.
And that email will, and I I want to be very clear about this to both the people watching as well as to the city council. That email is the ballot. That is what will be the official voting version. When we, in in a short amount of time, Dan Gilbert will display the ranked choice voting grid. And as he opens each email to validate that it has the appropriate, all of the appropriate ways that we're going to be voting on there. When I call, when I announce the council member that he should enter the votes for, he will enter them in the grid, we will all see it. And then each individual councillor will look at that grid and go, I concur, those are my votes. And Dan will also look at the email as compared to what he's entered. So we're going to have three opportunities to validate that what is in that column is on the ballot. And so the ballot is the thing, not, you know, everything else after that is us validating that what is, we're going to be seeing is what's on the ballot. We got that? Councillor Zaret?
I just realized, do you have a preference for the sake of standardizing all the emails as well for what the subject should contain?
No, you could put your name in there if you want.
Okay, thank you.
I put council appointment, if that helps. I mean, that is clear to Dan that that's what he's getting.
Councillor, oh, I also, before you can speak, I also want to be clear. You will be sending this from your government email, not a personal email. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Given that the meeting has gone on for two and a half hours and this might take a minute for Dan Gilbert to to call for a five minute recess at this point.
Okay, we are now in recess for five minutes. Thank you, we'll return at eight thirty.
Hey, this is kind of exciting. If this screws up, you know, everybody's going to be scared to do ranked choice voting for the mayor and the councillors.
No, they won't.
We're being recorded.
Yeah, we're fine, Dan. So I've gotten a question. Did, did I give out Dan's email? I did in an email to all of you last night. Can you all confirm that you got it? Or Dan can probably put it up. Actually, Dan, would you mind putting up like a blank screen with just email addresses on it? And I can give those to you. Barbara's is, unless you know it, but it's B L A B O M B A R D at easthamptonma.gov and then yours. And then if you could share that, that would be outstanding. Okay, what time is it?
I will be there in just a second.
Okay, we have one more minute. All right, it is eight thirty. The city council special meeting for October twenty eighth is now back in session. You should be looking right now at the emails for where we will be sending our ballots. Are there any other questions from the councillors and are we all back? Let's see, say them, Tom. Okay, I'm going to wait a minute. Doesn't look like JP is back yet. There he is. Okay, so again, I will ask one last time. Any questions from the city councillors on how we are to proceed with the balloting? Dan, can you confirm that at this point you have received no emails from anyone?
At the moment, I have received three emails.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to delete those.
Okay.
Because we have not started voting yet. All right.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to, for technical reasons, make a motion that we accept the ballots as written and that we take a voice vote, that that is the process by which we are moving forward so that we are in compliance with any requirements the state may have during open, during this time of COVID nineteen, that we have voted by voice to do so.
I'm sorry, what are we voting to do?
That we're voting to go through this process by, through an email ballot, since all votes need to be taken by voice for recordation purposes. And in fact, that motion be stated that we will be voice acknowledging our votes.
We, we can do that, but I can tell you that open meeting laws around elections and voting merely state that they cannot be secret ballots. And so they don't, I, to my knowledge at least, Barbara, they don't give us any more guidance on voting. Is that right?
That was all I could find.
Yep. So I'm fine with doing that, just to cover our bases. Do you want to make the motion?
I move that we proceed by email ballot for the election of a city councillor to fill the position vacated by councillor. to fill the position vacated by councillor Lynch. And that that ballot then be announced and acknowledged following that election.
Motion is second to ensure that we are allowed to basically say that we are going to be performing this election as described and that we will announce the winner and we will very transparently show the process of getting to the winner as we move through this. Any further discussion? All right, Barbara?
JP, Kuzinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak? Dan Rist?
Ian?
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerat?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Okay, one last call. Any further questions? All right, now we will open the voting and you may now submit your ballot as we have previously discussed to the email addresses above. Thank you.
Are people allowed to speak or what?
Nope, sorry. Thank you.
People aren't allowed to speak?
Nope, that moment, we had an hour of public speak, an hour and a half ago. Thank you. JP, are you all set? Are you having any difficulties? We can wait a couple more minutes if you need. Okay. Dan, can you, or maybe you've already done that, can you look at each of them to make sure that all five have been ranked?
I'll do that right now.
Thank you. Wonderful. Great. Okay, so the process now will be for, in each councillor in alphabetical order. Dan will take the ballot and he will enter on a grid that we will all be looking at. Each individual councillor, as I call out their name, he will enter their numbers in this grid. And then each councillor will look at the grid and verify that in fact that is accurate to the way they voted. Does that make sense? Okay. All right, again, we're going to go by alphabetical order, so we'll start with councillor Coniff's ballot.
Can everyone see the grid?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm going to leave myself unmuted in case there's any issues.
I don't have it up there. I apologize.
You're not seeing it, JP?
I am not.
Do you have your screen in full mode? Gala review?
Maybe if he reshares?
I can stop and I'll reshare it again.
Yeah.
Does everyone see?
Did that work, councillor Kuzinski? You're on mute.
I was just going to say that doesn't seem to work, but I'll listen carefully.
Okay. Go ahead and enter the ballot for councillor Coniff.
Okay.
And I can confirm that that is in fact my votes. We'll move on to councillor Derby.
That's correct.
Okay, councillor Gomez?
That's correct.
Councillor Kuzinski?
That's correct.
Councillor Peak?
That's, that's not right.
Yep. That's my mistake.
And that's why we do it. How about now? Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Councillor Rist?
That is correct.
Councillor Rothschild?
That is correct.
And councillor Zerat? Okay, so Dan, can you explain kind of the results of round one?
Dan. So this represents, as you guys can all see, each individual ballot running vertically and each individual candidate running horizontally. The first step that I'm going to do is I'm going to highlight all of the first votes like so. So before we, before we do the first round, just know, just to summarize, we are not doing previous round elimination. We are only using these tiebreaker scores. Just so everybody can see what these are, are averages of all eight ranks from each candidate. And we only use these in cases of ties, okay? So for round one, the count is candidate Collins has one. Candidate Flood has four. Candidate Hinkle has zero. Candidate Morrissey has three. And candidate Saint Pierre has zero. At the end of round one, we eliminate any candidates that do not have any first choice votes. In that case, that is candidate, candidate Hinkle and Saint Pierre are eliminated after round one. We do not have any votes to redistribute because those, those candidates did not receive any first choice votes. And every councillor still has their first choice vote in play. So round two is very simple in that the vote totals remain the same, okay? At the end of round two, we eliminate the candidate who is in last place. That is Kay Collins with one vote. We also redistribute that vote on councillor Peak's ballot to the second choice, which is Erica Flood. So for our round three count, we have five, three.
You had five there.
Oh, I certainly did. Thank you. That's why I have those little flags down here to warn me. And that's also why we're doing this publicly, so everybody can watch. It's very easy to make typos. So the vote threshold for a majority is five votes. And so at the end of round three, we do have a winner, which is Erica Flood.
Congratulations, Erica. That's great.
Does, before, before I stop talking, does anybody have any questions, concerns or issues about what you see in front of you and about how that process was tabulated or went down? This is not going to go away. This information will, you know, this is a public meeting and this will stay. So anyone can look at what these results are.
And, and I would also like to say, if you can email that grid to the city clerk, she will include it in the minutes of this meeting.
Absolutely.
Yep. So does anyone have any questions? Councillor Rist?
I just want to say, Dan, this process has enlightened me more than any other time. We've talked about ranked choice voting and Tom Peak, I love you, but this helped a lot. I know how it works now and it works well, I have to tell you. So thank you.
I was about to say myself, Dan, you did a great job communicating that and thank you so much for participating in this process.
That, that's been my goal the whole time is, is to make it very clear. I mean, a picture's worth a thousand words, so seeing, seeing it happen makes all the difference.
Madam President, if I might say? Oh, hang on, Erica, one second. It's pretty historic that, that we, what we just did and it's amazing. And I think, I think it kind of came off without a hitch. So thank you to everyone. I just, before you speak, Eric, I want to ask the councillors if they have any other comments or questions around the process. Councillor Zerat?
First of all, I wanted to thank everyone in no particular order. President Coniff for pulling this all together. This is a unprecedented, but not unprecedented process that has never happened in the city, at least not in this way, shape or form. And thank you for your communication, walking us through the process, walking us back through the process when the weather didn't cooperate. Councillor Peak and Dan for, you know, helping us through the RCV process and everyone who supported it. And I wanted to congratulate all the candidates. You were all amazing and incredibly well qualified. One of the heartbreaking parts of this whole thing is that only one person can be seated, but I'll be following up with all of you in regards to some of the things that were mentioned tonight in terms of how I can partner with you in the city. And I would recommend that we partner with East Hampton Media to do a video called You Down with RCV. So I just wanted to put that out there right now as well.
Councillor Peak?
I just want to say, and I think there's probably going to be a lot of this general platitude sharing, so I apologize in advance, but I, this was maybe the hardest vote I've ever taken because there's so many people here that I could see all these different reasons why I might want to work with them. And there's so many great candidates, they're so different. And for, for me, what it came down to a lot was about sort of what skill sets we have and where I see weak points and where some people might be able to shore up some of those weak points. But I just want to say that I really appreciate everybody for reaching out and I really look forward to working with you all in some capacity in the future. And just as a reminder, there's going to be for real elections with way more voters next year. So keep that in mind as well.
Anything else from the councillors? Okay, councillor Gomez?
Thank you. For a second, I thought you didn't see me. Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say thank you for the five candidates that we have. There was a five strong candidate, period. No, three good female candidates and then two other candidates. We have five strong candidates and I just want to make that clear. The other thing that I want to say is there was a few comments in social media about this process. I think this process was transparent. We do everything here. We didn't do anything backdoor. This vote was freely. No one pushed anyone to do it. And I just want to make that clear too. We follow our rules that we have in our charters and in our rules. Probably we have to review some of those rules, probably not, but for the future, probably we have to sit down and see if we can have a better, easier understanding process. Was a little bit confusing at the start, but at the end, everything goes well, goes well. At something that councillor Derby said early today was that sometimes we make decisions and make people upset. I think tonight is one of those nights. Someone in our community is going to be upset about the way that we vote. But again, we vote freely. We vote for the people that we think is, is the person. And I, I, I respect everybody for the way that they vote and I hope that everybody respect the way that I vote too. I'm still going to be the strong voice for those, the minority in our community are going to be the strong person in, in this, in this board and this committee. And I just want to make that clear. Thank you, everybody. And those five candidates was amazing. That was amazing process that we were assuming in almost three hours that we, as the candidates, we usually do in six months. Going door, knocking door and going to different places. This process was condensed in only three hours and that, that was amazing. And congratulations to the new council.
Great. We have a couple more pieces of business, but Erica, if you'd like to say a quick word, that would be totally fine, just if you wouldn't mind keeping it fairly quick.
Thank you, councillor Coniff. I would like to say I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I would like to say, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I have my sister sitting here by my side. Uh, I can't tell you how much this means to me. And I would like everybody to know that if you would like an opportunity to speak to me, please, um, reach out to me and, um, by phone, it's four one three six two six nine nine oh six. Um, soon there will be a city email address. You can look me up. I welcome dialogue from everybody and I'm very honored for this moment. I, I truly want to represent the entire city, like, um, whatever preconceptions you've had about me, I just welcome the moment to like, give the opportunity to reach out to me and please speak to me. Um, I'm, I'm very honored by this moment and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Erica. Um, just a couple of, uh, pieces of business. Um, so Erica, you'll be sworn in next Wednesday before we start our city council meeting. Um, so, uh, please come. Uh, also, um, I just wanna check in with Barb real quick. Barb, I wanted to announce the new committee assignments tonight, but I didn't specifically put that on the agenda. Should I wait until next week? Or can I do it today?
I, I would think you should wait till next week.
Okay. All right, no problem. Um, okay, then I think, uh, Counselor Kuzinski, yes.
I've been raising my hand. I, I must be off your screen somehow here. Uh, first of all, I really wanted to thank, uh, everyone involved in the process and Dan Gilbert for your excellent descriptions, which I think through a very complicated process helped all of us and I think the public, uh, began to understand the dynamics of ranked choice voting. So thank you so much for being there. Uh, to all the candidates who, 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 uh, came forward, kudos to you all. Uh, I think that, uh, if anyone writes that, that you were unsuccessful or a loser, I would say that they are absolutely wrong. You are all winners and folks who are very successful. You are going forward. You shared your experience with us and I think we all thank you for that. I look forward to working with you all in the future. Erica, congratulations. Uh, and with each one of you, please, uh, reach out to all of us, stay in touch and let's help to make East Hampton a better place for all.
Thank you. Counselor Derby.
Sometimes concise is sweet. We're lucky to live in East Hampton. This was a really cool process. Thanks, everybody.
Really was. Um, yeah, I just wanna add my thanks to everyone who, who stepped up and, and wanted to go through this process. It's, it's not easy. It's certainly easier than six months of campaigning, but it still puts yourself out there and you, I'm sure all of you have discovered that when you're in the public domain for even five minutes, people have things to say and they're not always kind. So, um, and that is very unfortunate, but that's the world we live in right now. So, um, I hope that you will take heart. Um, none of this was, uh, you know, uh, there was no, there was nothing negative, I think, about any of this from our perspective and I'm really looking forward to working with all of you in the future. And, um, you know, I'd like to see a, a few of you on the ballot in, uh, in November, next November. So, um, thank you, everyone. Lindsey, did you take yourself off mute to speak?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, I'm just, I'm just totally psyched. This was probably the hardest vote since I've been in the, uh, it is the hardest vote, I can tell you, since I've had this office. Um, I would be thrilled to work with anyone that, you know, any of the candidates. And, um, I'm so psyched to see so many women running and I hope that, you know, on the next ballot, that is also reflected. So just, this is all been awesome, so that's it.
Counselor Rist.
I'm not saying this because I have some agenda with the president that I want her to say nice things to. I'm saying this because people question sometimes if women can lead. Counselor Coniff, you're proof that that's absolutely false. You have done a remarkable job throughout this entire COVID situation, through these Zoom meetings and especially getting this up and running and a really smooth procedure. I applaud you and I'd like everybody on the council to recognize our president did a great job here.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Awkward. Uh, okay.
Sorry.
I don't think we have any other business to discuss tonight, so I will at this time take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Barbara?
Uh, Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Yeah.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zara.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. See you next week.